I'd like to call to order this joint meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the RMLD.
And of the Citizens Advisory Board, we're all present in person.
This meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being held remotely on Zoom and streamed live on RCTV and YouTube. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. Vice Chair Pacino will be the Board Secretary.
Yep.
Will any remote participants identify themselves, please? Jackie?
Hi, Jackie McGrath. Thanks.
Hi. Are you up? Do you have anything else to say? Okay, so our first item up is the public comment says Chair Coulter, but I don't think that's accurate.
Nothing to say?
Okay, any liaisons to the RMLD to report? Kara and Jackie not here. And now will be the presentation of Zach Fentress, the CPA from Millanson.
Hello, everybody. My name is Zach Fentress. I was the Audit Manager in charge of the RMLD December 31st, 2021 audit. And here tonight, I'm going to go through the financial statements, highlight some certain account balances. So if anybody has any questions or concerns, please feel free to address me at that time, and we can handle those at that time. Before we jump into the financial statements, I think it's important to have a conclusion for the takeaway from my presentation here tonight. And the conclusion should be that the department had positive operating results, have a well-funded OPEB trust fund, and that there was no management letter. If I could at first have you turn to the first page after the table of contents. The first page after the table of contents is the independent auditor's report. This is essentially what the department hired us to produce. The department received a clean opinion, which means there are no exceptions, and this is the best opinion you can receive from an independent auditor. And this is the same opinion that the department has received in prior years. If I could next have you turn to page four, which is the first page of the Management's Discussion and Analysis. The Management's Discussion and Analysis takes place on pages four through seven. And essentially, this is a narrative summary of the results of operation. This section also discusses major financial areas. So instead of simply sitting here and reading this to you, I'd actually like to jump to page eight, which is the Statement of Net Position. And we'll discuss the same thing on page eight and some further pages that are discussed here in the Management's Discussion and Analysis. So page eight is the Statement of Net Position, or otherwise the balance sheet for the department. You see your assets, your liabilities, and then your net position. There's presented on a comparative basis, so you'll see there's a 2021 column as well as a 2020 column. The first item I'd like to bring to your attention is actually the very first line item. It's unrestricted cash and short-term investments. And that has a balance of $16,901,000. It's actually about a $3.3 million decrease from the prior year. Now, that decrease is primarily due to the use of operating funds for capital improvements. The department utilized some of that operating cash for capital improvements this year, which is why you see that decrease of about $3.3 million in your unrestricted cash and short-term investments. Maybe about a third of the way down the page, under non-current assets, you'll see a line item called Capital Assets Net of Accumulated Depreciation. And that has a balance of $84,766,000, or about a $3.3 million increase from the prior year. Now, that increase is largely due to some capital improvements that were made by RMLD during calendar year 2021. And the two largest were for overhead conductors as well as underground conductors. The overhead conductors, there was a large conversion process to a particular part of the town to increase the voltage for that particular part of town. And then for underground, there were many transformers that were placed in calendar year 2021. It was about 178 transformers that were replaced in totality. About two-thirds of the way down the page, moving under the liabilities, you'll see there is a non-current title. And that very first one is the net pension liability. And that has a balance of $11,944,000. It's largely unchanged from the prior year. It's about $100,000 decrease from the prior year. But the reason I wanted to bring this to your attention, it's one of the larger liabilities on your balance sheet. And this represents the RMLD's proportional share of the total unfunded liability for the Reading contributory retirement system. Now, that liability is being presented as of December 31st, 2020. Accounting standards allow that liability to be presented one year in arrears. What's important to note about this is that the Reading contributory retirement system is about 79% funded. And that's slightly above average in the Commonwealth. What we see is that average in the Commonwealth is anywhere from 70% to 75% funded. So to have it slightly above is a good position for the Reading Municipal Light Department. Right below that is net OPEB liability. And that has a balance of $4,158,000. Now, OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. This is essentially the health insurance. So the department has an actuary come in where they determine what the future health insurance payments for both active as well as retirees will be into the future. Now, this is actually about a $3 million decrease from the prior year. And that decrease was due to a change in benefit terms in relation to some Part A and Part B premiums. What's important to note about this figure is that this liability is 55% funded. So if I could actually have you turn to the last page of the financial statements, I think it shows a very good illustrative view of this liability in totality. Last page, page 46. So page 46 is the Required Supplementary Information, and this shows the schedule of net OPEB liability, which is the one I want to focus on here tonight. It's on that very top half of the page. You'll see that the total OPEB liability, which was determined by an actuary, was actually $9,242,000. So this is the total liability that was calculated by your actuary. But the department already has funds set aside, and you'll see that as the planned fiduciary net position. So the department's already put aside $5,084,000, which shows you a total net OPEB liability, or excuse me, shows you a net OPEB liability of that $4,158,000, which we saw back on page eight, which shows a funding percentage of about 55%. Now, that 55% may not sound like a lot. It's a little bit more than half. But in comparative to your others in the Commonwealth, this is a well-funded OPEB trust fund. The cities and towns are anywhere from 0% to 10% funded. And what we see for, in average, for other light departments in the Commonwealth is anywhere from 30% to 35%. So to be at 55% puts RMLD above your contemporaries in the Commonwealth, and again, is a good financial for the Reading Municipal Light Department.
Zach, before you go on there, just one of the things, you see that number, and this came up in the discussion in the Audit Committee earlier today, you see that number's gone down. That's because there have been some changes in terms of the actuary. Sharon Anstrom, who was on the call before, did talk about there was some people who apparently, and maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, Wendy, there were some people who were on the health plan that actually were over 65 and should have been on Part A and Part B of the Medicare. And so that's why you see that number's gone down, and overall, the town decreased by $10 million, she said. Hope I got that right, Wendy, okay? And Sharon Anstrom was on the call during the Audit Committee meeting earlier today, earlier tonight.
Sharon was able to provide some excellent insight to that, so we certainly thank her for her expertise on that from earlier.
Let me interrupt you.
No, you're fine, Phil.
Okay. Yeah.
So moving back to page eight, that was everything I wanted to talk about on page eight. So if we could flip the page to page nine. And page nine is the Statement of Revenues, Expenses, and Changes in Net Position. This is essentially the income statement for the Reading Municipal Light Department. And again, you can see it's presented on a comparative basis with your 2021 figures as well as your 2020 figures. The first item I want to bring to your attention is actually maybe a third of the way down the page. It's the very first item under operating expenses. You'll see it is purchase power, and it has a balance of $60,291,000. It's actually about a $3 million increase from the prior year. Now, that increase is primarily to the department making a concerted effort to increase their energy buying portfolio to contain more non-carbon items, such as wind or hydro. Now, the price of your non-carbon resources, wind or hydro, are more expensive than your carbon resources, which is the primary reason why you see that increase in that expense of about $3 million from 2020 to 2021. Now, that increase in those expenses was partially offset by charges to the customers, to the ratepayers. So if you look at the very first line item under operating revenues at the very top, you see that electric sales and net of discounts had a balance of $87,931,000. It's about a $1 million increase from the prior year. So although operating expenses did increase for your purchase power, they were slightly offset by increase that was passed along to your ratepayers in calendar year 2021. The next item I want to talk to you about is your operating expenses. And it's, again, it's under operating expenses, and it's right below purchase power. It's called operating. And that has a balance of $13,353,000. This is actually a decrease of about $2.3 million from the prior year. Now, this decrease is primarily due to that decrease in the other post-employment benefits liability that I discussed on page eight. So the other post-employment benefits liability decreased by about $3 million. The offset to that transaction is actually going to be shown here on your operating expenses. So it may be a bit misleading. All things considered equal, if you were to factor out that OPEB adjustment, operating expenses would have been the same from 2020 to 2021. But because of this one-time change in benefit terms for the OPEB liability, it did impact your income statement to decrease those operating expenses. And the last item I want to bring to your attention is actually three numbers from the bottom. It is your change in net position. And our change in net position was $2,697,000, which is essentially the net income for the department this year. And what's important to note is the Department of Public Utilities has an 8% requirement on your net income that it can't exceed 8% of your net plant. And for calendar year 2021, Wendy and I both do this calculation at the same time. For Millanson, we had that at 4.26% rate of return. So the department was well below the 8% threshold required by the DPU. That's everything I wanted to bring to your attention tonight. So again, just as a conclusion, again, the department did have positive operating results, which you can see on page nine. There's a well-funded OPEB trust fund, which was on page 46 that we discussed earlier. And then finally, there was no management letter. So in addition to proving out the balances in your financial statements, we also look at the department's internal controls to make sure that the department's assets are being appropriately safeguarded and that there's good internal controls in place. And if we were to see anywhere where improvements could be made, we would recommend that in a formal management letter. And the department has not received the management letter in 10 years, which really speaks to the work that Wendy and her staff do to make sure that things are operating effectively and that there are good internal controls in place. And approximately 10% of Millanson clients don't receive a management letter. So RMLD is in really good company to not have a management letter. It really shows the work that all the folks do here at the department. So I want to thank both Wendy and Colleen Quigley and the entire RMLD staff, who we work very closely with, that were very well-prepared. The accounting records were in good shape, and the department was very timely in their responses and to our requests and to our questions. So as I stated in the previous meeting, this was the first draft that Millanson, for our 1231 clients, got out the door, which again speaks to the condition of the records here at Reading. Questions, concerns, comments?
Yeah. Zach, can you, again, it came up in the Audit Committee, on 42, you have the leases, where that's a big item for 2022. Can you, you and Wendy actually address that here also, if you would, please?
Not a problem.
Yeah.
So on page 42 is a note disclosure to the financial statements in its new pronouncements. And that new pronouncements and what we, and the reason it's being included is there is a Governmental Accountings Board's Statement Number 87, which is going to need to be implemented for the department next year. And that is in relation to leases, in situations where the department is both the lessy and the lessor. We've been talking about it for a few years with Wendy, knowing that this is coming down, we'll certainly be involved helping the department implement that for, you know, the December 31st, 2022 audit. Certainly be reaching out to Wendy probably over the summer to make sure that we're both on the same page and that there's not going to be a crunch come year-end, that it'll be kind of smoothed out and handled over the summer. So again, it's in relation to both situations where the department is a lessy and a lessor. It may be determined that, you know, they may be material and not necessary for the department to implement. And speaking with Wendy, it sounds like there are some copiers and...
We were talking about other leases as well.
Yep.
Warehouse leasing and private lease and coal attachments, so we'll have to review it all.
But that is going, as Mr. Pacino mentioned, that is going to be a rather large impact. There may be both liabilities and assets for the 2022-year end on the balance sheet for the department.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more comment. I know you mentioned the 4%. I know Wendy brought up a good point, you brought up a good point. That's gross.
Right, so the DPU says that municipalities can't make more than 8% of gross, but RMLD specifically, there's a regulation that RMLD cannot make more than 8% of net plant. So right now, we're at 6.7%. And we do target that rate of return when we deliver the budget every year. So 6.7% is right around the target that we were expecting.
Not to get too deep into a rabbit hole, but the DPU doesn't actually specify in their regulation whether it should be gross or net. It just says a plant, which is something that I've reached out to the DPU on to get clarification, which they weren't able to provide. The vast majority of the light departments do use gross, but RMLD does have to use net.
Yeah. So one of the things potentially to us, maybe at a future agenda item, to actually look at whether or not we should be going to gross versus net for a future agenda item, Madam Chair.
Yep. So for June, we're thinking we'll put that...
Yep, I certainly will.
Wendy would ask the question. Any thoughts on that?
There are other MLPs that go 4% of gross and 8% of net. So we could do a little study, just see what everyone else does, is that or not. Be helpful.
I have a question. Just curious, you do this type of work for a lot of municipalities and light plants?
That's correct.
About how many?
I do six or seven light departments in the Commonwealth.
And then you do municipalities as well?
I strictly municipalities, which is correct.
Okay.
So I do about 30 governmental audits a year.
And are they, is it handled the same way where you do those other ones every year?
That's correct.
And who, is it always, who, sorry, appoints you or assigns you?
It depends from community to community. I believe it's the Audit Committee appoints us here in Reading. But in some town situations, it could be the town manager, or town administrator, or it could be the finance director. It does vary from community to community.
How does it work in...
Yeah, here, it's actually, the agreement we have with the town is that it's actually the Town of Reading Audit Committee, which determines, because they also audit the Town of Reading, too. So it's a joint, it's a one contract that covers everything in terms of that. And we've always kind of done that as, you know, transparency quite truthfully. Yeah.
So when the contract's up, I reach out to the town, I reach out to Sharon Anstrom specifically, and then she reaches out to the Audit Committee before she already has that site, and then we determine if it's okay to follow.
Continue with the...
To use the...
I see, okay.
Another thoughts? Anyone from the cab? Jason, do you want us to...
You want to report from the Audit Committee? Would you like to report from the Audit Committee?
Yes.
Okay, so the Audit Committee met before this meeting at 6 o'clock tonight. We had a spirited discussion. I see Greg laughing. A spirited discussion on many items. And the Audit Committee basically did unanimously vote to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that they accept the audit as presented, with the date of May 23rd, 2022. And there was unanimous vote. And the Board Subcommittee, Mr. Coulter and myself, also makes that same recommendation. Yes. Okay. And I can make the motion if you're ready.
Move that the Board of Commissioners approve...
Let me get the right one. Move the Board of Commissioners accept the 2021 audit report from Millanson, fiscal year ended December 31st, 2021, as presented on the recommendation of the Town of Reading Audit Committee. And the Board Subcommittee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Pacino, aye?
Aye.
Just go back, aye.
I'm leaning to be the aye.
All right, very good.
Motion passes 5-0, and taking yours later?
Yeah, we don't vote on the audit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, we're going to consider the approval of the Board of Commissioner meeting minutes.
Very good. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you, Zach.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, so let me move the, move that the Board of Commissioners approve the meeting minutes of February 24th, 2022, meeting on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Do you have a second? Bob Coulter, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. Pacino, aye?
Aye.
Just go back, aye.
I think this is the cab now.
Yeah, the cab goes next. Right, they got their mands.
Yep. So we have the approval of our board minutes. First up is our regular minutes from December 20th. Any discussion?
I wasn't present, so one abstain.
I was not present either.
Then we can't vote, right?
I think you can still vote.
They have a forum.
Okay. Make a motion that the, move that the Citizen Advisory Board approve the minutes of the December 20th, 2021 meeting as written. I'll second it. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
I'll abstain.
I'll abstain.
And aye, approved. Motion passes 2-0, and two abstain. Next up, we have a motion on our executive session minutes from January 20th and April 4th.
I move that the Citizens Advisory Board approve the executive session minutes for the January 20th, 2020, and April 4th of 2020 meetings as written.
I would like to move that those be split into two separate motions, as I was present for one and not the other.
Okay. Good thought.
I move that the Citizens Advisory Board approve the executive session minutes for the January 20th, 2020.
Second. All right, roll call vote.
And I'll abstain.
Vote.
George Hooper, aye.
Jason, a small aye, 3-0, and one abstain.
I move that the Citizens Advisory Board approve the executive session minutes of April 4th, 2022 meeting as written.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Ken Walter, aye.
Ms. Kelly, aye.
George Hooper, aye.
Jason, a small aye. Motion passes 4-0.
Okay.
I don't have an argument there.
Now, Vice Chair Pacino will release the executive session minutes.
Yeah, so let me give a report. Yeah. So basically, at this point, the review to release the minutes has been performed for 2013, 2014, and 2015. 2016, we hope, will be reviewed in time for the next meeting at this point. The recommendation is, is that the February 27th, 2013 minutes, the September 17th, 2014, and February 26th, 2015 executive minutes be released. I understand that vote is to take place in executive session, which we have scheduled later on tonight. At this time, there are no other executive session minutes that will be released at this time based on this review, because some of these issues are still ongoing at the present time.
Mr. Phipps, you're up. Hydro power supply extension.
So we, so good evening. We have one power supply opportunity in front of us. This is for an existing contract that we have in place right now. It is a contract that was originally signed back in June of 2012, a 10-year contract that expires at the end of, near the end of June of this year. It is a small hydro facility in eastern Connecticut. It's an old one, very, almost ancient, originally powered a mill on the river, textile mill. It currently is generating power. It's in the process of FERC relicensing right now. The way the FERC relicensing program works is if they don't respond back, there's an automatic extension of the year to their existing FERC license. So what we concluded to do, what the proposal is in place, is that we won't do anything until that FERC license is finalized, in terms of doing a new contract, a longer-term contract. As you guys know, we like to do long-term hydrocontracts. So the proposal of the year is to do, we'll say, up to 36 months. It'll probably just be a 12-month extension. It will basically give us time for, give the owners, which is currently Gravity, Gravity bought it, who sold it back in 2016. It is, it does not have any certificates. It was done 10 years ago. The certificates didn't exist at that point in time. They currently have Connecticut Class 1 certificates. They are not part of this extension, but they will be part of the longer-term contract. The pricing is a 10% increase in terms of what we're paying currently. Those are kind of the big pictures. The other key thing is that because this is a simple extension, it is not our intention to do any environmental justice review until we get ready to do the longer-term contract. So we basically are going to extend the, request is to extend the current contracts up to 36 months with about a 10% price increase. On the request from the RMLD staff.
Could you explain that 10 years ago, it didn't have certificates, but there are Connecticut Class 1?
Yeah, so in order to get certificates, you have to register the asset in E4GIS. So I don't know, I haven't gone back to the history to see when they actually did that. But Gravity took that responsibility since 2016. I can double-check that. But currently, it does, it is registered as a Connecticut Class 1 asset, or currently is. 10 years ago, certificates for MLP were not a critical priority. I think at that point in time, when somebody were here, the purpose was to kind of get our toes in the water, toes in the water with renewable hydro. So anyways, in order to get the certificates, you need to, there's a process that you have to go through registration. And that has been done since then, but we don't currently buy those certificates. So those certificates are sold on the open market. When we do do a long-term contract, though, we will do what we currently, it was, we always buy the certificates associated with the energy. But in this particular case, we see that policy, I'll call it policy. Sure.
Sure.
Good. Sorry, Greg, does the cost increase for the energy tend to track the cost increases for carbon sources, for fossil fuel sources, or just an increase in demand for clean energy?
I think this is, that's a massive question. So currently, in this particular one, that 10% is pretty modest in the pricing, it's very modest in terms of the pricing on the open market right now. We're looking at like today's rate right this moment at about $88, open market, $88 maybe a watt hour. This is not even two-thirds of that. Typically, this time of year, we'd be in the range of high 30s. So the market is, it is, it's stupid, success is not the right word, but it is, there's a tremendous amount of upward pressure, and that will be continued for probably the next 12, maybe 24 months. So it's a chance your question. There's a chart that we put together, I think they've shared, I put together for that, but it kind of gives you a, I can send it to you, walk you through it again, but it basically looks at all the different classes of assets, with and without certificate sales, that are tied to our compliance obligations. And this particular one happens to be on the lower end of the scale, but does not have any certificate tied to it.
Any inkling to where this sits, meaning on a river? Is it in a, like, academic development zone? Because I, you know, you see, is it...
So the FERC approval has actually been issued, and what this does not have is a fish ladder. And so there's eel tied to the field migration up and downstream. And so one of the issues is it's going to take almost a decade to put that fish ladder in place. In the meantime, they're gonna start trucking, literally, trucking up and down, upstream and downstream. So I'm answering a different part of your question in terms of the economic, it's a, there's no, there's no, we don't know of any right now, but we haven't done the, we haven't, we haven't charted like we did with the other ones, the environmental justice piece, but we, there's no one, we haven't had any problems with this for the past 10 years, and there's nothing in our understanding that there would be any. The new owners are, Gravity, they're, they are diligent in terms of making sure that they take care of the environmental and the social environment that they're in.
Yeah, th- those mill blocks are very developable right now, and all of a sudden, you know, all around you's all condos and, you know, retail, all, all the mill of a power plant, oh yeah, pops.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, that, you know. I think currently best used, so in, in the, so that particular facility, that's an actual picture of the facility, best used of that particular one is, is as, as a hydro facility. And what they do around it, we haven't looked at, but primarily just in terms of what's coming out of that power. And the real intention for us is just, you know, we're gonna go each, for 36 months, we're basically buying time to let all these things kind of filter out. The key question for us is, the initial, the initial price that they're asking for was much higher than we thought was reasonable, and we understand that reasonable, that fit our portfolio. So it was tied to the, the construction of that fish ladder stuff. So we may or may not, we will, we will negotiate on a longer-term contract, but we may or may not decide to do one. And as, as you guys know, you know, we look at these contracts, we, we, we have been for the past 18 months, we've been on that, the past 18 months, we've been aggressive in terms of finding, as RMLD, whether it's the ENE, or M-WAY, or just going out by ourselves, uncovered opportunities, this is one of those. But it's not a foregone conclusion that we would want a term contract, but just basically, the price that this is at, Ken's question, it's a good price, it fits in our portfolio, it has particularly high price time, so it's economically a good move for us.
Just a quick question, if, if the equipment is very old, Greg, and the equipment fails at some point during our contract, what happens if they default in terms of supplying energy?
Yeah, so they, so all the, almost all the hydro facilities are unit contingent, which means we basically buy whatever's produced. So if it's offline for whatever reason, and hydro do go offline for variety reasons, in some, in the summertime, they tend to, flow tends to dry up before it starts to rain again. So there's no, there's no commitment unlike some of the nuclear deals, where if they can't supply it, what they call firm pricing or firm delivery, they got to provide it somewhere else. This is not, and most of the renewable are not.
Thank you.
So there's low risk to us, but we, we really want this power.
Sure.
Particularly over the next 12 months.
So it's up to 36 months, is that what it is?
Yeah, I, I think it'll only last 18 or 20 months before the FERC license, before we finish our negotiations and the first paperwork comes through. But I decided that 36 to up to, I don't think we should go that long. I didn't want to have it open-ended, is what I, I decided by 36.
Any other questions? Cab votes first.
Do you have a motion then?
They vote first.
Citizen Advisory Board to present.
I move, yeah, there's no other comments or questions from our board, I'll accept the motion.
I move that the Citizens Advisory Board recommend to the Board of Commissioners a vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to extend the existing power supply contract for the Aspenook Wire Wind Hydro Facility for up to 36 months, commencing June 2022.
Second. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, Madam Chair, okay. Move that the Board of Commissioners on the recommendation of Citizens Advisory Board, vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to extend the existing power supply contract for the Aspenook Wire Wind Hydro Facility for up to 36 months, commencing June 2022.
Second.
Aye.
Ms. Pacino, aye?
Just tell what I.
Now, Mr. Jafari, presenting for procurement requests.
Oh, you want the motion? Okay. Move that bid 2022-18 Electrical Utility Excavation Services for hourly rates be awarded to Zim Zinelli Excavating LLC pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30, Paragraph 39M, as the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendation of the manager. The contract is for a one-year term, with the option of RMLD to renew for, renew the contract for a maximum of two year, two one-year renewal terms.
This is a three, this is a three-year contract?
You get a second, a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
This is a three-year basically contract for excavation, for both emergency and non-emergency related matters that involves referring, digging, referring underground duct tanks, fiber optics cable, manhole, enclosure, handhole, and other underground infrastructure. So the bid was sent to 23 companies, and five responded. Three of those were responsive. Three of them were responsive, however, the lowest responsible, responsive bidder was Timsinelli. And if you look at the analysis in the last page, you can see that, you know, well, all three bidders, Timsinelli came off the lowest for each scenario, which basically is, this is just the labor, nothing material included, just the labor. So we gave them three different scenarios, and they don't for each year, they're all better, they did it on, for those scenarios, how much we get charged for the labor and for the equipment. So, not the material. So that's basically what the story is about, basically. Any questions?
I mean, I noticed that there's a considerable difference.
Yes.
Yeah.
It is.
Did you kind of examine that to make sure there was anything worth, case you want to do is award something, and then they default, yeah?
Well, initially the contract basically was passed eight years, that happened here. It is a local, so all this equipment are local, other parts of other companies that they have a follow, and you know, cost number for organization, demobilization. So it's been within the range pretty much, you know? Now, this is, you know, under $10,000, you could go ahead, you could ask him to go ahead and dig and do whatever that you, we need to do, in order to make repairs. Between $10,000 to $50,000, he still can do that, but we have the option of getting three codes.
Right.
Which sometimes we do, to see that, you know, well, the price is a little bit over what we normally we have seen, so we can get three codes. Anything over $50,000, it's gonna happen to be a form of bid. So it's not like that, you know, it's unlimited.
Right.
We're using it for basic, you know, digging, and, you know, the areas that we want to set the poles, and, you know, we don't have the equipment to set the poles, or equipment, ledge involved, and, you know, we need, you know, more equipment that we don't have, so things like that, basically. Also for emergency, you know, you know, this.
Well, if you're familiar with them, you've been using them for eight years plus, so.
And pretty much, we know what the prices are from other contractors, because routinely, I call, I check to see that, you know, well, how much the labor is, how much the equipment they charge is for, and there've been places that, you know, we've got three codes, to make sure, you know, they're not carrying the, you know, price, because they could bid low during the, the scenarios that you create, and later on, you know, they end up charging you more for the labor. And it's been pretty much, you know, within the range.
How are material costs handled? Is, is markup fixed by, by the contract?
Yeah, well, no, the materials, we have to, we have to pay just for whatever the material cost is, you know, for like pipes.
But, and no fixed markup?
There is no.
Okay.
For those also for the materials, we know, we have the list of the prices, we know how much. So we have the price range, so when we're submitting the labor cost, cost of the material, we know, these materials are not really deep materials. The manhole covers, we have them, so we, the handhole, we do have handhole.
That's the same.
Yeah, you're saying this is.
So the only material that we can, you know, supply is not bolts, and some of the, you know, PVCs, pipes, you know.
Mr. Millie, Mr. Millie.
Prevailing wage is prevailing wage, so.
Just own all his own equipment, don't own our own, or bar.
That's how he does it. Interesting.
I don't have a question about this, but just got a text from somebody who says the Zoom is not working so well. Is not, the audio is, is messed up. Is that? I don't know if it's true, but, because we're in the room, but.
No, I know that, I just, yeah, I usually see that. Oh, that was a good catch, yeah.
The phone is, I mean, I think it's coming through the phone.
Is it?
Well, the, I don't know if it's on.
Maybe we shut it off after Zach was done.
The phone is on, it's a question whether they can't hear.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I think the phone has harder time picking up the people from the audience.
Yeah.
Oh, so all audio's going to that phone?
Yeah, the audio's going to this phone.
For Zoom?
Certain like fronts, like there's one right in front of you as well, so it's picking up you from the board clearly, but.
I don't think you could hear maybe Greg and Hamed.
We use the owl, which is pretty good.
I think we have an owl in back order.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we use.
So the reason people can't hear it on Zoom is because it's only picking it up over there?
Yeah.
There's only like two of these too, so.
When it was.
Okay, so if there are no questions, do, are, do you guys, should I wait for Cab first?
Any other questions?
No.
No.
Okay, so we have, we had a second with Bob, right? All those in favor?
I don't think, yeah, let me ask, let me ask, I have one question.
Sure.
Is this job subject to prevailing wage rules?
Yes.
So these are prevailing wage that are in here? These are all prevailing wage rates, okay? Want to make sure of that, okay? All right. Ms. Pacino, aye?
I'm willing to be the aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. We move to the General Manager's report, Colleen O'Brien.
Tyler, do we have a test to see if anybody, because should I sit over there, or no?
Um, yeah, you might want to sit in that.
Yeah, just come over here.
And I just muted my phone, so I might have.
Yeah.
Okay, good evening, just a couple of announcements first, we get into some other more interesting. We did have the High School Art Contest Award held on May 12th, we did it by Zoom. Phil and Bob were able to come and help hand out the awards virtually, and we had a great turnout, the artwork was inspirational. It'll be put on to our annual report, right, that's for 2021, now that Zach has finished and we voted, we can get the annual report out and put the beautiful artwork on the front. So that should be published in June after the final reviews. The annual bike swap, we hosted that again on RMLD out front on May 3rd. That was hosted by the Redding Climate Action Committee, and I heard it was one of the best bike adoptions thus far. So we'll continue, we're trying to support that effort going forward. Planning on RMLD presence in most of the traditional summer events this year, throughout the four communities, such as the Wilmington Farmers Market, we plan to be there and have a booth. So if there's anything that we're missing, people want to give us a shout, we'll be glad to set up for technical and provide some RMLD information for those events, now that we're all back in person. Some of you may have gotten my memo this morning on the EV chargers for the grants. We've gotten five Level Twos, and then we're notified on Friday that we got the Level Three for the Redding Library. The EV charging construction is starting this week. So on Wednesday, we'll be at Main and Haven in Lincoln. So in the memo, I did write that the construction is going to be run concurrently, and so there is a subcontractor that's doing the direct drilling through the retaining wall at the library. So I know Karen was at the audit meeting, she's looking, maybe we have a photo op or something, so I'll let you know when, when that is. So if anybody wants to come down, maybe we can take a shot as we, you know, dig into the ground and start that project, so that's pretty exciting. We've got the two poles in at the Wilmington Library and the Wilmington Town Hall, because those will be mobile units in case those buildings move or relocate at this time. So pretty excited about that. It was $100,000 for the Level Three grant. So just, so we're clear for that, that's just the charging head. So, you know, I did have an opportunity to talk to Chair Roy of the TUE at the ME meeting, and I had asked him if there was any way that we could get some money for a possible EV consortium for the North Shore municipals. Wouldn't that be nice to have a little plaque? We could start on 93, have them in Wilmington, and then all the way up, Wakefield, Danvers, Ipswich, Rowley, Merrimack, Groveland, all the way up with some plaques. So he's interested in talking to us some more about that, but he'd want to have a Level Three, and they are pretty expensive. So if we go from 480 volt to 208, one head costs about $160,000 just for the head. So, big difference between the Level Two and the Level Three, but I think we're going to keep moving on that to see if, if maybe we can get some supports, because I think that would be a really good, really good project for, for the MLPs. Anyways, that's really all I had for community update. Any questions on that? Yeah.
On, on the library, I know they're gonna pour through the granite, that's what it sounds like, is there any appetite to go up, in, and down? Pouring through granite is a monumental effort, and then you, something happens to it, you own it? I just don't know what the, I mean, I don't know if you, if part of that bid, or, it sounds like they're gonna go through the foundation?
The, yeah, it's concrete foundation.
It's concrete, but.
Yeah.
But if it's. Through the granite?
Through the, you get, through the wall, the wall.
Okay, through the wall.
Stone wall.
From the pole.
Concrete wall, right.
Oh, oh.
Under the sidewalk, up through, and they'll, they'll come up with a box right at the.
So it's not, it's not going, it's not penetrating into the building?
No, 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 no.
Okay, okay, you're not, you're not going up the, you're not going up the main switchboard, okay? Yeah, yeah, no, no, I, I, that, not, you're going pole to a charger, you're not going into the switchboard then coming out, okay?
Yeah, there's a little grassy strip area when you get up into the parking lot. So the Level Two will be on one side, we'll adapt it so they could put another Level Two on the other side. And then we're putting the pipe in now, under the Level Two, to, to get ready for the Level Three, which sounds like we'll be doing the construction at the same time.
Right, yeah, I, I just heard drilling, and it scared me, sorry. I just, I just known the life, that's the old massive granite foundation, so I.
They're supposed to start that Thursday, if you want to meet me out there, you'll, we'll take some pictures, we'll take some pictures.
Colleen, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I know that Wilmington's moving along with it, once we get this done, I mean, the first two are the hottest.
Yeah.
Now that we pulled the Band-Aid off and we finally get going, when will the next ones, any idea?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because I forgot to talk about that. So right now, we have site selection folks, which are you, George, and in Redding, we have Erin, who's the Economic Development Director. We are looking for site selection person from Lynnfield and from North Redding. So while we finish up the construction on these EV grants that we got, we want to go for another round while there's still money for the Level Two, possibly Level Three. We want the site selection to kind of give the RMLD, like, a list, this is where we would like them. And then we go out and we do kind of a feasibility study, because the first time we did it, people wanted them, like, at the library, which is nice that we're putting it in, but it's a lot more money than what's expected, and we can get a lot more in if we're not doing that type of construction. So we're looking for that wish list, so we're going to continue to have those meetings. Ken, maybe you could help out with, somebody who could be part of, like, where do you want them in Lynnfield?
So I'll certainly bring it to the attention of the account manager and the Board, and the Select Board, and get some, some thoughts on that. These are all on public property, all public spaces.
Yes, for right now, correct.
I provided about a dozen locations, none of them are with directional drilling, so.
Home out, home out.
And Jason, can you do the same?
Yes, I know, try, continue to try.
Okay.
Colleen, potentially, how many sites are you, would you be looking for?
Well, so for the last two years, we've put one Level Two dual in each of the four towns, right? So this will be the second year. So for example, for the library one, while we were able, were able to continue the conduit from the Level Two, there's still going to be about $40,000 extra that doesn't come out of the grant, that will then come out of the money we put in for Redding. So it, it. So it, it, so we're putting in one dual each year, but if you pick a place where we have to spend the money, you know, that's where it goes for right now. Is that, answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. So, but if you give us a list, then the construction crew can go out and look at, is the electric service there? You know, are we digging into ledge? Are we digging into granite? Are we, you know, that type of thing, and then we can give a list back and say, here's what we can do. Good? Any questions on that? It's exciting.
It is exciting, I do have a question, it is exciting.
Yeah.
I should know more about why certain sites were chosen, and I don't. Um, but the Level Three at the library, that, that stuck out to me, of why did the library end up with a Level Three supercharger?
Uh, we had actually looked at all of the sites for a Level Three, um, that's the only one that had the voltage available in the location, because if you're going to bring 480 volt that's not in the area, it would be very, very expensive.
Very expensive, yeah.
If we went to the, is it 208 voltage? Okay, if we went to the 208 for the hundred and sixty thousand dollar, it would make it a little bit easier, but a hundred and sixty thousand just for the head.
Sure.
So, um.
Is, is there any, based on where we are, is there any ability to adjust anything, or is it all a done deal at this point? Only reason I raise it is because a Level Three, there are very, very few of them around.
Right.
They're good to have, like, near highway interchanges, because people who are going through need to stop and, you know, get hit with a hundred miles in 20 minutes or something, which is what a Level Three is going to do. A library use case is more like you're sitting there for a couple hours and you're going to top up and get 50 miles, and it's just, when I saw that, it struck me, as an electric car owner, it struck me as an odd place, like, you're going to get people coming off highways looking for that supercharger.
That, that wasn't our first choice, but that's out of the five, that's where.
That's where the voltage, that's where.
That's where the voltage was, we had other ones, because that was part of the grant to have it close to the highway, but unfortunately, the first site selection, they came from the towns of where they wanted them, that's what I'm saying, going forward, I think we'll work with the site selection committee and try to target more.
Yeah.
In places, Greg, you can, is it okay?
Just, um, one of the other things about the library, um, so there, there were limitations to actually win the grant, and we do have budget allocated that are not grant-based that gives us a little more flexibility, but in case of the library one, the reason why, it was one of the very few, like, we two, they would have worked under the grant, but the use case there was a combination of Level Two, which to your point is, hey, I'm going to be there two or three hours for whatever, I'll do a Level Two, but if I'm picking something up or dropping somebody off or trying to do a quick, you know, I'm there for 20 minutes or 25 minutes, then the DC fast charger, Level Three is a good use case for that. It's not perfect, but it, but it actually kind of fits the way, as we talked to Jamie and the rest of the group, there are people that come and go fairly quickly, and other ones that stay there for a period of time. So having both, both at the same location is going to give us some use case data. It's not perfect, but there is a, there's a logic behind it.
But it's a.
We run a lot long.
And there's nothing, like, I, I'm bringing this up now, but it's, it's all a done deal, right? Okay.
It's a wait, yeah.
Okay, never mind then.
It's a done deal that on, on Thursday, it'll be, it'll be.
No, but you know what, Dave? Um, like I said, we, we've had a meeting every couple weeks, so if you have some sites that you're interested in, it, it's information that go, go back and forth, if you, if you're looking at Redding, we can discuss it with like Ryan and Aaron, and see where it lands on theirs.
I'm just saying, it's, Level Twos are good to have at places like that, shopping centers, libraries, Level Three, you want them kind of near the highways.
You're going to see a lot of them, so there's, there are other companies that are trying to put it into our territory, which is good and bad for us. We also have in the budget, we have five DC fast chargers and five Level Threes in addition to the four that we have originally allocated, and so there's a, we're, we're queued up to do more, and we just wanted to get through it more a little bit, plus there were grant dollars.
Sure.
Timing associated with it, but yeah, we're, you know, back to George's kind of question, yeah, the Band-Aid's pulled off, we've done a lot now, we want to accelerate.
He's had to be on public property.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was a little bit, if it was.
It was a block from my house, so it works for me, but, yeah, it wouldn't be the first place I would put one, yeah.
Anyway.
Melrose is.
Level Three.
Melrose has got a good pole mount program right now that's, that, that really popped.
Yeah, we went and saw it.
Yeah, oh, you went and saw it, yeah.
That's, in fact, the ones who are in the building are the same year.
Yeah. Oh, nice job.
Yeah, yeah, but that, but that's, but it was, it was interesting, and, and those site selection went through, and they did a good job, and they put them in good spots. And in the beginning, we didn't, we didn't know how it was going to go, but, um, that was very, very interesting, yep.
Well, we'll solicit from the commission of where they think would be good, it'll make good conversation in the site selection group, so.
Who's getting electric car?
Not yet, we're looking.
You have one, George?
Not yet.
I thought you were raising your hand.
My wife's next vehicle, she told me.
Okay, so I'm going to go to Economic Development meeting and then back to Policy 13, which, um, it makes a little bit of order sense here, but, um, so this past Monday, we had, actually on the 16th, we had a joint committee meeting between the Board of Selectmen and, um, the Board of Commissioners, it was a great meeting up the town hall, um, and we discussed several things. Um, I took three action items, of which you got a memo from me on those action items. Uh, the first action item was, I sent you a preliminary overview of the RMLD space use, of which I, um, we went through everything that we have in this building and all of the space that we think we need, but I did write in there that a recommendation to do a study to confirm that, and I'm not trying to convey the configuration that it should be for the best ergonomics for the efficiency, but those are the space requirements that we need. So that was the first action item that was, that I took. The second one was to arrange for an informal meeting with Barbara's trucking out back for the 21,000 square feet that we rent for inventory, and also in interest of that building. Uh, Steve's pretty tied up for the next couple of weeks, but, um, he agreed to the meeting, and so there, there is a select board member that's assigned to this discussion, but no Board of Commissioner meeting, so I was hoping at this meeting, we could, uh, get someone for that, to attend that.
So, does anyone want to be, going forward for the next six to 12 months at least, the representative from the board?
For Economic Development.
Yeah, not just talking to Steve, Barbara, but you and Bob, thank you.
Okay. All right, so I'll coordinate that with you then.
Okay.
Um, and then the third action item, uh, was to provide a discussion in steps regarding the RMLD facilities use, which is policy number 13, for the AV room for municipal-related meetings. Um, the current RMLD policy already allows for such use for the AV room cafeteria and certain non-restricted land area, and I provided an attachment of some discussion and some barriers, um, for that use. I mean, we can facilitate everything that's in the policy right now for those areas. Um, but in the discussion at the joint committee, it seemed like it was going to be a much more frequent use, and with that, that's why I had listed some of the discussion areas. We would upgrade some locks, some locking systems, um, and, you know, probably have a discussion about support. Um, I think, Bob, you were talking to Tyler about the technology that's coming in here, we'd like to put a smart iPad that, with instructions, if, if no one from RMLD is here, they could come in and get the whole thing going with RCTV and run their meetings. Uh, we could lock, have all the doors, locking mechanisms in the cafeteria fixed. Um, so I think we can, it's not like we can't do it, it's just the technology is probably not going to be for another three months due to supply chain, um, other than what we have right now, um, and it would probably take about a month to get all of the locks fixed, and we would put crash bar alarms right here to the control room. So I just want everybody, to remind everybody, we, we're not like the high school, we don't have custodians, we do have some maintenance workers, we have some IT people, um, and while it might seem that they would want to be here for every single meeting, they probably would not volunteer, so we would have to look at staffing as far as someone here to open and close the door and do that type of thing. The control room's job is not to do that, and that was one of the reasons why we made that major change in, in 2016, that became effective January 2017, because it was open to the general public, um, and the control room was not able to handle the requests and people running around, and we had some vandalism, and so as part of our NERC audit, um, in restricted areas, we had to kind of limit it to, um, municipal agencies that have the liability insurance, which, um, which is actually a lot of different committees. The, the bike adoption is actually under the Climate Action Committee, which comes under the Board of Selectmen, so it's pretty wide, how many people could use it, but that's what the policy says now, and we would have to work towards more frequency. So I don't know if there's discussion on that, but those were the three action items.
Okay, I mean, so would we charge a fee for the use of the building, or the, of the room and the facility? Because if we have to hire somebody, and that comes out of the RMLD and the ratepayers and everything else, so I would suspect that, and if we had a large number of people wanting to use it from different groups in town, uh, which I think is great, I mean, I really have no issue with it, but if it's going to cost us money, should that not be a shared kind of expense?
Yeah, we didn't talk about that, but that's something that we could help to support the use. I mean, if you all recall discussions I've had in the past, we're not supposed to go beyond the, the electric business.
Right.
So for example, when you have an adopt an island, we vote for that and it gets paid out from the bottom line, okay? So we, we couldn't really, you know, hire staff just for the purpose of renting out the building, we would have to go through the steps if that was the direction that you wanted to go, to, to start like a rental business, if you will. So we just want to be careful, whatever it is we want to do, I'm sure I could make it happen, uh, but yeah, some kind of a support fee, you know, some people making some overtime is fine, but if it got to be like it's booking out every single day, we may have to make some different changes in order to support that. Um, the technology we're putting in, I talked to Tyler earlier, it would be nice if we could troubleshoot some of the IT stuff from home, so we could call you and say, hey, could you take a look at it? But as far as people rolling in that just worked during the day might, might be a little tough.
Yeah, I take, I take that, understand what, you know, everybody understands what, what the room would be used for technology-wise, most people are displaying something, but most of the, most groups are going to come in here and they're going to, they're going to put something on the wall, whether it's a, a football team or, or some other organization, they're going to want to look at slides, and, uh, so I think the technology in the room is, is, is very, very important.
Yes.
And obviously you get cam, you have cameras in here, but, you know, how, how it's, how it's going to be set up, I, I don't know if this is the right wall, if that's the right wall.
We're going to have three large TV screens, one, two, three.
Yep.
There's going to be a smart iPad controller that you would come in and set it up. Um, RCTV will be plugged into the three screens, and they will be able to pick which one they're showing, so one would be like the Zoom screen, one would be the presentation screen, and one would probably be the person talking, but RCTV can switch between them. So it would be very similar, I don't know if you've seen North Redding's or, but it's, it's, uh, it's the standard now for the, for the technology for Zoom and hybrid meetings.
Yep, just like the, we're in the other day. Right, and it's fully functional, but, um, just, again, if you're going to commit to a room, you don't want to make it an unusable room at the cost, right? You know, you're talking, a group 25 buck, a nominal fee, right, out of the gate, and then I think you could see if it grows and becomes a very useful room, but this was a, a popular room, I knew, I knew it was, you know, in the past, it was one to rent, so, um, yeah, just have to, I, I would say just keep the cost down for now and, and then open it up and, and let people use it, and then if it becomes a very popular room, then you have to adjust, you have to adjust, but.
Okay. Well, you can.
Sorry.
You can take a look at what I've written for discussion and some of the barriers and stuff, and we'll, we'll work towards that. Um, Erica will probably help support scheduling, and we can move forward, but again, this is the technology we have for at least a couple few months.
Uh, just, just so I'm clear, it's always been the case that town entities, and it could be of all four towns, have been able to use this room?
Correct.
Because I don't, I can't think of when that's happened in the, I know COVID, but even before that. How often was it happening before COVID?
It wasn't happening very often, but it's all four towns, and it's this room, the cafeteria, and outside the gated area, um, and.
Do you guys ever remember one of your towns using it?
Before COVID, the police department was like using the cafeteria for the, like, rad training, um, so we had different entities from the towns using it, but it, it wasn't very often.
We have a facility director, we, we have areas just like this.
And you wouldn't come to Redding, because that wouldn't make sense.
I thought we would be opposed to it, now that it's available, throw it out there and see who jumps on it.
Um, we will give you 10% off, I think.
[laughing]
Willington, sorry, 25% off. Um, no, kidding aside, so now there is talk, now people know it's here, this, the town is talking about it, I think we can expect a bunch of reservations to come in, and to John's point, it's going to be a new logistical thing. Would we consider, given, I think the, I think there's a common understanding, the building is, there's, there's some room to separate off part of this building and have it be used by others and not interfere with utility operations, is that a fair statement?
Are you talking about during the business day?
I guess so, yeah.
Oh, I don't, I didn't think we were talking about during the business day, just about every conference room is used for training and meetings.
This one too?
Uh, this one's used quite a bit, I mean, we had, uh, lime worker training, we've had, Hamed's probably used it five, six, seven times in the last three weeks for all-day training.
Okay.
We're very familiar with this type of, and the, the facilities, but you have to make sure that you have the support for your IT, obviously, it's going to be, if somebody comes in, not everybody knows how to use the equipment.
Right.
Especially the first time, second time coming in here.
Right.
They all don't treat your equipment as, as you want them to. The other thing is isolation, uh, to make sure that your offices and stuff, so you bring your locksmiths in, and your custodial staff, uh, that's going to clean up after everyone leaves, lock up, secure the building, and then go. So I don't know how, uh, late your staff stays here as far as custodial, that's what we do.
We don't have custodial, we have maintenance workers, they leave at three.
Yeah, so that's something that you might want to implement, you know, so.
So where I was going with that might not have been, maybe it makes no sense, I don't know if it does or doesn't, but if we're, if this is going to start to be a use that happens fairly often, is it worth at least thinking through whether this room could essentially become leased to the town of Redding? And it's now with, with separate entrances, uh, it's their room, there's revenue coming in to RMLD, and is that even feasible from the utility perspective, given the size of the building and the ability to use other rooms?
Uh, I.
And then there's a revenue stream associated with that, that's also saves the town money based on what other options they're considering to solve other problems.
I think, I think I'd like to take some time to talk to senior management about, um, I think if it was, if it was to be something like that, then it might be something like it's available the second and third Monday of the month, or we would state it, so that we're not interfering with, like, the bid openings happening here, um, which, if you're trying to schedule out, you know, four or five months from now to get the room, the, the bids have to be done at certain times, so I think if we scheduled it a certain amount and it wasn't just an open schedule, then it's possible that during the day, this room could be used, but I'd like to talk to senior management first, if that's okay?
Yeah, of course.
I can follow up with, with a memo and attach it to that.
And I guess a related idea would be, and I'm thinking about the police station where there was just a decision made by town meeting to do some renovations, and some of those rooms are going to be used by other entities other than the police department. So following that model, is there a chunk of this building where if we're with some renovations and a separate entrance, somehow, just throwing it out there, on the same model a separate entrance, somehow just throwing it out there on the same model where others could use it and there's a lease payment, if not this room, maybe a piece of that side of the building or whatever. Just, you know, it's just as a, as a space study and a revenue source.
I don't think, I'm sorry.
I think you probably need to see where the demand would come from for it before you get to large amounts of renovations, obviously.
Yeah, right. I mean, sure, the stipulation here would be that the town is interested in leasing such a space over a long period and gets X, X thousand square feet, a separate entrance, there's revenue coming in. Of course, it would be contingent on the town wanting it, and then it's their problem, it's their, you know, it's their space. It's not your problem to manage, it's...
Do you know what kind of space they're looking for, like square footage?
I mean, that would be the subject of maybe a few planning meetings at, at staff levels to, to work all those things through. But the first thing would be, you know, is there even the ability of the utility to, to cede some of the space in the interest of getting some revenue, and then solves a problem on the town side as well.
Okay.
And saves money on that side and gets money on our side.
Let me have...
I don't know what the parking, when you're, during the day, when all your staff's here, how much parking you have. When you talk about using the space at the same time as the work, the power employees are here or the employees are, that becomes...
Yeah, right.
Too, so.
They've worked through all that, yeah.
Yeah, see, you know, you may have availability of parking at night, but not during the day.
Right.
And then coordinating that many people coming in and out of your building while you're trying to run business, it can be distracting.
Yeah. That's, that's why I think it should be, if you, and I had maybe the same idea what Dave had, is having the town rent maybe this building, this room, and then their responsibility, they, they provide the custodians, they provide the cleaning, cleaning at this point. Now, I know we had a discussion about Station, Station One over here, about doing something with that. You know, I'm concerned about the parking around that. That's another issue, that's another major issue, if we ever do something, if there has to be something with that, that property.
But in addition to this room, what about that small room? I'm sure you use it all the time during the day, but if at night this were to be a public meeting space for municipal groups, could that room also be available? Because it's kind of small and private, and this is big.
Um, like I said, there's locking mechanisms that would isolate this area with IRD being locked and the rest of the building being locked. So yes, I would think that that room and this room could be isolated to be used. We could probably add that one to the existing policy.
Yeah, it should be sometime, you know, not during the day, but sometime restricted, sometime at night. Have this room available for people at night to be, you know, I, I think, you know, if you're during the day, you may have staff going back and forth, even out here at this point. So, but I think at night, this room could be available for meetings. Yeah. Something to think about. Okay?
So I think it's just some meetings between town staff and, and RMLD staff to work to see what's, because it, it sounds like no matter what, they're going to, they're going to start asking for a lot of night rentals, and it's going to be a, a new thing that's happening.
Okay.
The, the town, excuse me, the town can, I assume, use space at the library as well, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I know, from a perspective, when I try to use space at the library, you can't do that. It's only for town-related nonprofits within the town, essentially, they can use it. So I think maybe there's a question of supply and demand here, because I don't know what the demand is. They have tremendous meeting space at the library. They've got many different rooms there, nicely appointed too, but I have no idea. But every time I've been there, they've been emptied.
There's none this big, right? They're all, they're all kind of chopped up. They're all kind of smaller rooms, and you go to, you go to rent it, and you know, sometimes you want to come in with like a youth group, right?
You want to break out smalls.
Yeah, exactly. You want to be allowed, you can't, but I don't mean that in a bad way, but, but it comes in, you know, if you had 20, 20 kids, you want to look at some film or something. It's a, you want to come in, you, you can't fit in the library.
So 20 kids with bubble gum, right?
And, and chips.
Yeah, no food.
And crackers.
Okay. Let's move on.
Okay, so that's all I have on the economic development. Dave was there, and Phil and Marlena were at that. Any questions on that? We can just go to the ENE board meeting?
Yep.
Okay, so I had sent out kind of the packet that came out at the last meeting. I don't know if you have any questions, it's kind of pretty lengthy, so I won't go through it. The next ENE board meeting is, is tentatively scheduled for June 8th, waiting for confirmation. But they do post their meetings similar to WeDo's, which, so you're not really getting an agenda until 48 hours beforehand. So I can send it out again. If you look at what I sent out to you for March, those are typically the discussion topics. If there's anything that's important or an emergency or anything like that, I would always come back and email you right away or get ahold of the chair. So those are typically the topics, if you want to take a look at them and give me any input that you would like me to convey at the next board meeting. I think Greg's going to come with me to that. You can just email me.
When is it?
Uh, well, today, it was June 6th, and then this morning they were thinking of moving it to June 8th in Mansfield, but I'll have to confirm that.
Damn.
That's all I have. And then we have the MEEM meeting. Do you want to give that update, or you want me to?
Well, I was only there for half of it, but on Friday Steve Doucette spoke about the importance of terms and conditions being written perfectly, and he said that of all the municipals, he thinks Reading's is perfect. And he gave an example of how it played out because it was so well-written. And it came down to a fire and gross negligence versus negligence, and the terms and conditions summary is what got them out of gross negligence, which would have cost RMLD $390,000, but instead they only paid $20,000. But the most interesting part that came out of that, I thought, was Colleen's YouTube video with the board by Mike Carroll.
Yes.
You, you tell about that.
So it was, it was a case in which a neutral opened and the customer saw blinking lights, which is usually when we get a call, we respond, and we're able to, you know, fix the problem. In this particular case, the fire department was called, who came and took a look at the house and said, everything's fine, unplug some maybe of your appliances, but the person wasn't able to unplug the refrigerator, and so the house caught on fire. So the attorney was explaining to all the MLPs the importance of the terms and conditions. So I've changed them twice since we've been here. We have them looked at every few years to make sure that everything's covered, and, and it did cover us for, for this particular open neutral under a couple of different languages, pieces that are in the terms and conditions. So if you want to take a look at them again, they are on the website. It, it was a good thing. The more important thing is back even before this happened, because open neutrals can be common and we cannot prevent them from happening, they are common throughout a system. Actually, in communities that are closer to the ocean, the salinity corrodes them even quicker. So the customer's grounding system that's in their house, and when someone says to me, well, you know, I had an electrician, he says that I'm grandfathered. I'm not really interested that you're grandfathered. I understand that the wire inspector won't come in and find you, but we don't want to be grandfathered, we want to be in accordance with the code, right? So if you're attached to the water pipe and you've got address coupling with, with, you know, non-conductive material in it, or you have no outside grounds, if there is a voltage fluctuation, you could lose some of your appliances. So we did a training video that's on our website, I can send you the link, we did it a few years ago. It's a board that, and we have it at our open house, if anybody's been at the open house, and it showed, we have, and we had our contractor electrician there, and Mike Carroll on our side explain, okay, this is what RMLD owns, this is what you own, this is what we're responsible for, this is the maintenance that we do on our side, and you as the homeowner, this is what you're responsible for and what you have to do for your maintenance. And a lot of people don't do maintenance on their electric system. It's kind of, it's not like heating, they don't have it tuned up, but you really should. So if you want to take another look at that video, I think it's very helpful and preventative. And if you have blinking lights or anything like that, please call us immediately, and we will come right up. So I'll send you that, I'll send everybody that link again.
Okay.
Good video.
Another interesting part of the MEEM meeting was John Fitch, the GM from Boylston, or West Boylston, came up with a spreadsheet for, for those who are interested in reporting for the zero carbon goals, the climate law. Greg and Colleen have added their two cents to how it could be better, a lot better maybe, but, well, I don't have it to put up for you guys, but...
They're, they're trying to work on a standard that all the MLPs can use for their reporting. As you know, Greg does ours and talks about the recs and, and when we're retiring them and when we're selling them and stuff. And so they're, the MLPs are just working together to try to come up with some kind of a uniform reporting mechanism, so.
But he kind of lamented that the DOER is a little reluctant to approve it, so it's kind of just up to the GMs to say, well, this is what we're going to go with then until you do participate. Anything about the Thursday part of the meeting?
I was just trying to find my notes.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, Colleen, here. Can you come up here, because I guess I couldn't hear from the audience. I can...
Yeah, I think we were talking about, I think I left it on the table. I think I left it on the table.
Get to the MEEM agenda.
Just the three things, the, the time of use, Kelly's time of use.
Oh, yeah, sorry, go right here. So on Thursday, we did the subject time of use rates. The key takeaway on that was this, the spread was very significant. And when we talked about the A3 rate for Reading, we had 8, 12, and 24. And Kevin Kelly was talking about more like 40 cents for the spread. And he also went from an 8 to a 4 hour. So Greg is looking at that to see if we're going to retool that spread to, to get a better creature, behavior change. We talked about tariffed on-bill financing, which Ipswitch was talking about, and it's, it's essentially leaning, you can lean your house in order to come up with the money in order to make efficiency changes to your house. What the RMLD is doing is we're working with Energy New England and some of the other MLPs to mirror the Mass Save to come up with a interest-free loan program. So if everybody's familiar with Mass Save, you can borrow up to $25,000 for zero interest for seven years. So we're, we're working on a project like that. I mean, the lean thing is an out-of-the-box thought, but, and so we'll track that, see how that goes. We did talk about air source heat pumps. The key takeaway on that was that having contractors that specifically work on heat pumps is making this go a lot faster. That was kind of the main takeaway, which we do. We use a bode, and they have a contractor list, so we're, we're kind of ahead of the game on that. Representative Jeff Roy was there from the TUE committee, aside from me asking him for the money for the North Shore Consortium on the EV chargers. He talked about offshore wind, and he's got to go to Denmark to check that out. I volunteered as a retirement job to help him out.
Nice job.
So I'm hoping that he'll, well, yeah, I told him I'd be his secretary in Denmark.
He picks some commissioners with him.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that would be fun. The MEEM legislative update, they talked about the liability insurance related with mutual aid. Marlena already talked about the broken neutral and the template developed for the DOER and the DEP. So that was about it. It was a good meeting, it was about 40 people there. It's a good networking opportunity, so thank you for allowing me to go.
And thanks for letting me go. Okay, so, next meeting, any other comments on general management's report? So the next meeting is scheduled for June 23rd for the board.
I have a conflict on that night, I would not be able to attend.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Are we going to try to schedule with the cab as often as possible? Right? So that they only present once. So can you guys meet on the 23rd here also? I guess is the question?
I'm available.
I'm available.
And then should we try to schedule out three months at a time? Because I think other committees do that, and it's helpful.
Sure, July and August is going to be tricky.
So what's the next?
It will, but...
June 23rd? June what?
You can call it.
25th or 20th?
From your vacation.
23rd, yeah.
George.
You know I was on vacation the 25th.
Because you're the one concerned about it.
Skip on this story.
So...
Usually skip on this.
All right, so June 23rd, you can, you think you can do it, guys?
Yeah.
Here, 7, 7, not 7, like, the earlier we start, the earlier we get out, so.
It's started at 6 usually.
Usually what we try to do is put PDBAC on your night, so unless there's like a consultant like tonight with the audit report where it makes sense to present to both groups. If it's more just individual meetings where there's not a common presenter or an educational type thing going on, then we'll try to hold our own meeting before your meeting, but we'll do it here on the same night.
Okay, so you guys at 6?
Yeah, and it makes, makes coverage a lot easier for your liaisons under our meeting, our liaisons under your meeting. So typically we try to do that, unless we have a common interest like tonight where we want to do a joint.
Okay.
But as far as the 23rd, we're good for 6 or 6, if you guys are just sitting there, we probably start at 6.
That'll be Colleen's last GM meeting. She's thrilled.
Last two weeks in charge.
I've got a lot to do, you guys have given me a lot of action items.
Does RMLD create the agenda for our meeting?
What's that?
Good question. Kind of sort of, not really.
It's, yeah, they'll have some things they want to present, they'll run it by me for our meeting, and then they'll ask if we have anything.
But you set the agenda for your meetings, he sets the agenda.
So if there was something you wanted to talk about, just go, get to Jason, he can get it on the agenda.
Yeah, and I want to...
Seven to 10 days before the meeting is when I get hit up for the agenda items.
Same, so, a week before is good, because there's deadlines with Town Hall to meet that 48-hour line. Erica reminded me, or she's teaching me, that the 48-hour line includes the days that Town Hall is open. So when they're closed Friday, Saturday, Sunday, those days don't count. So if we have a meeting on Monday, she has to know by Wednesday.
Have to post by Wednesday.
Early afternoon, really, yeah. So get me your ideas, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I guess, what you want to see on the agenda.
On the 23rd, what, what time we meeting?
So June 23rd, we'll meet at 7:00.
Okay.
Is that okay?
All right.
If they meet at 6?
Let me ask for a personal, a moment of personal privilege here.
Yes.
I have been diagnosed with prostate cancer. I go to start treatment on the 31st of this month. Prognosis is good, I've talked to everybody, so I'm going to keep going. I'm going to keep going, and I will make any meeting that I can. If we have a meeting too early, my treatment's supposed to be at 3:30 every day, starting from the 31st of May through August the 1st, all the weekdays. So if we start meeting too early, I may not be able to make it, okay? But I will continue to go forward. At this point, I ask, keep me in their prayers at this point, if you would, please, no matter what religion you are, yeah?
Sorry.
Thank you.
We'll do everything to accommodate that.
Okay. We debated long and hard whether to announce that tonight.
Well, thank you for telling us.
Yes.
So, the July meeting, does anyone have a preference for a day of the week time? We were doing Thursdays, but now we just did some Mondays.
I think I was trying to stick to Thursdays, like the third Thursday of each month to keep it consistent. And I had 7:30 only because if they meet and it runs a little over that 6 to 7 timeline, whoever is the liaison to their meeting has a little time in between the two meetings to jump back and forth, but we can keep it at 7:00 if you guys want to do that. It's totally up to you.
And we'll do 7:30 in case they run late then.
I'll do 20.
It's way too late. Yeah, we, we go two, two and a half hours regular. Early we can go the better.
Yeah.
You know, I'm 6, 6 o'clock, 6:30, if we could do it.
Yeah.
You know, I've talked to them about you guys, I'd rather go...
Well, they're meeting at, I mean...
I know, but that's, I just, it's the opposite of it, the family, you, Phil, but...
I think 7 is the compromise.
Then by 4 o'clock, we'll see.
You gotta, you gotta remember though, if we're going to go before you guys, and we have a talk, they want to talk about, how, what's been happening though, is all of a sudden the liaison's got to leave, and our liaison's got to leave, and our meeting comes to a stop. So if we're not going to have enough time for our meeting to do it before, we'll have to do separate nights. So that way, it's inconvenient, because now you got to show up two nights for that person that's covering the other board.
Plus RMLD staff has to be at two places at once.
Plus the staff's there another night, but, but it's just, there's been times where we've had to wrap up because, you know.
That's true.
But I don't know what to do.
What's your normal start time, 7, 7:30, right?
7, 7:30. So if you guys go 6 to 7, we go 7:15 or whatever, you know?
I suppose if we have a topic, we could always try to go a little earlier, you know, if it's something of importance.
I mean, I know I can make it a little early, because of what time we get out of work, but I don't know about you guys, no, no time is straight here. Vivek, Vivek may have trouble. I don't know what his schedule like.
I'm sure we can make it work.
Yeah.
If we, when we settle at the agenda, if we have an idea of time, then we can make adjustments.
The 10 will be at 5:30 or 6 for CAV, and then 7 for ELC.
That's what it sounds like.
For the next three months, Thursday?
Yes. So for June, that's the 23rd, for July, that's the 21st, and if... The 5th, oh yeah, 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 sorry, 21st, right?
Sorry, July 21st, yep.
And then August, we typically don't have that meeting.
We did last year.
Well, we're not, at least on that third week, because that's the NEPA meeting, NEPA Conference?
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
So people attend, a lot of people from here attend that, so.
Do you want to do the 25th then, Jason, until the week after?
I think last year we did it on the 12th.
I was going to say, how about the week prior?
April 11th.
I'd have to default to my, we're on the 3rd, Thursday, July, that's a common, that's going to be a common vacation week, I think.
Yeah. Don't count me on those two weeks. I'm out, so.
You're already away, right?
Yeah, I'm already away.
So is August 11th sound for now? I know it's far away. Okay.
I'm actually probably in St. Louis that week, that night.
Okay.
I'm dreaming over. I'm planning to go to St. Louis. A peer review conference. I'm a peer reviewer under the accounting, so.
Okay, well, I mean, this is tentative to change, but at least it helps.
So tentatively, August 11th?
Yep. And we won't even bother with September. September's really busy.
I think for the, for the CAB.
Book it now. Craig says book it now. He needs to know.
About July, because.
Yeah, I'll have Kathleen send for you guys.
I don't think that July, yeah, July and August, we'll have to, we might not be on the same night.
And September 15th.
That's, that's this.
All the commissioners see the warrant schedule, just to remind them what their responsibilities are for the rest of 2022. And you guys have to adjourn first.
All right, I'll put this up to the German portion of the agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Going to read the number 3, executive session.
Move that the Board of Commissioners go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 164, Section 47D, exemption from public records and opening requirements in certain instances to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate. If the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and to return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Yep. Ms. Masino, aye?
Scott, aye.
Aye.